Commissioner Pecos will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the March 11th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones, that the meeting documents are at the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly, and that Robert, who walked out the door, has a listening device as if you need them. With that, we will move on.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Say it.
A motion and a second to approve the routine agenda. Are there any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of March 4th, 2014.
Move the minutes. Second.
And a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Are there any comments or additions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $277,137.20.
I have a comment on the bills.
Yes.
On page five, under Public Defender, there is a psyche bill for $58.54 and $0.17. I would like to hold that bill until further investigation has been done. We get three times a month where we can have a state evaluation done at the cost of $800, and once we have had those three evaluations, we have to go to private psyche evaluations. This is more expensive than what we normally would pay for a out-of-state psyche eval, so I just would like to have that looked at beforehand.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills, but I'm going to exempt out the $5,854.17 related to the public defender's request for the payment for a psych evaluation.
Second that motion.
A motion and a second. It would make the amount of the bills for today $271,283.03.
I think that's what my motion was.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The following reports have been received and are placed on file in the auditor's office. A, the Minnehaw County Human Services Report for February 2014. B, the Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Center Report for January 2014. C, the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Department Report for February 2014. And D, the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of February 28th, 2014. Item E is the FY 2013 Annual Minnehaw County Financial Report. Darlene Johnson.
And I've asked Darlene just to speak about this briefly. This is a year-end report, and it's going to be published, and I just want it to be explained, just because it looks like we get more money than we did.
Good morning, Commissioners Darlene Johnson from the auditor's office. This is a new format that the Department of Legislative Audit is, I guess, requiring that we publish each year after our annual report is done. The one thing that kind of skews us a little bit, as far as part of the revenues and other sources, we include in that the general long-term debt issued, and that was for the refunding of the 2004 issue. So that adds $12,335,119.50 to the revenues, and then you'll also see the amount payments to refund a debt escrow agent for a close amount. The difference is the closing costs and fees that we have to pay. So it really does kind of skew the total expenditures and revenue, so it looks like it is much more than it is, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Darlene? Okay. Yes, move on. Thank you, Darlene.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I'd like to just comment on the sheriff's report that's in the reports handed in today. Basically, it just calls answered on the sheriff's report. In 2012, there were eight hundred, in January of 2012, there were 874 calls. In 2013, there were 1,022 calls. In 2014, there were 1,406 calls. So we've, it's almost doubled. And the same thing is true in February. It goes from 823 to 997, and this year, 1326. That's really a large increase.
Significant increase. Any other comments on the reports? Thank you, Commissioner Barth.
Item F is the presentation of the 2013 Annual Report for the Minnehaw County Office of the Public Advocate. Cindy Howard.
Good morning, Cindy.
You should all have my report, and I know that you've heard from me a couple times recently complaining about our caseload, so I'm not going to complain about our caseload this morning. Because you've authorized the new position for our office, and one of our attorneys left in December, we've hired two new attorneys in the office. One of them is from Minneapolis. She has about seven years of experience doing public defender work in St. Paul. The other one is fresh out of law school. So we're still kind of going through an adjustment phase, but things are getting better. So, thank you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Is there any questions for Cindy?
Cindy, you've had an increase, obviously, again this year in, over last year. Can you quantify that a little bit? Is it, you know, a double-digit increase?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent.
From 2012 to 2013 was a fifteen percent increase.
And so far, January, February, fourteen?
They're right up there.
They're right up there, the same kind of numbers.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelly.
Well Cindy, on those increases, about a third of them is felonies, is that correct? And about two-thirds misdemeanors?
Our total caseload is about, is, for last year, was 54 percent misdemeanors and 32 percent felonies.
And the other, the other is about the same this year as it was, or last year as it was in '12.
Yeah, our percentages are about the same. We just have more cases in every category.
Well, I think your percentage of others, though, has gone down compared, the increase has come basically from felonies and misdemeanors. Very little changed from what I saw, I'm trying to find the page, but in ANN and some of those others, there was not very much, there was hardly any change.
You're right.
The felony deal.
If you can answer the felony deal, I'd love it. There just, there have been a lot more drug cases. I can't, I didn't bring last year's statistics with me, but we just, we had a real big increase in drug cases. It also seems like we've had more robberies and more rapes in the past year.
Any other questions? Yes.
Congratulations on your work on the glory house.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Cindy? Thank you for your report, Cindy.
Thanks.
Item five is personnel actions. A is a motion to approve the personnel actions.
So moved. Second.
And a motion and a second to approve routine personnel actions. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
There are no application for abatement today. Item seven is notices and requests. A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for Project MC-253-46BR-12, the structure replacing and grading for structures 50-060-089 and 50-063-090 located in Grand Meadow Township.
Is there a motion to authorize the publishing?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second to authorize publishing of two bridge structures. Commissioner Kelly.
Are we getting any questions on this?
Yep. Did you have a question?
I assume DJ's out there. Or here's, okay, here's Shannon.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Are these on township roads?
This is a township, both of these bridges are on township road, that's correct.
And what are the restrictions on the bridges right now?
Oh.
One of them's three tons.
Well, three is six tons, well, actually, three, and then one is a three different truck classifications, so one is strictly GBW three tons, the other one, I believe, is six, 11, and 14, or something close to that.
Is the three just a cent, a straight three?
Straight three ton, 6,000 GBW, that's correct.
And I'm going to ask a question. Have you done traffic counts on these?
We don't do traffic counts on township roads, however, the DOT, throughout the three to five years of data that they collect for our bridge inspection projects, they will do an estimate, which is the best data we have, but in general, I can tell you that most township roads in our county are less than 100 ADT.
Under what?
Less than 100, somewhere in that.
A day.
Average annual data traffic, yes.
Yeah. But that's better than three.
It is better than three, yes, sir.
I mean, I'm obviously asking because of the other bridge we approved. Do you have the numbers on what they said?
I do not. Okay, Mr. Boothey, thank you. Twenty-five and forty-five is what the bridge reports say.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Shannon?
Madam Chair, I just would point out that if a bridge has a three-ton weight limit, it could keep vehicles from traveling across it, and so the count that we get during this restriction may not be what the demand would be if it was an adequate bridge.
I've been over the three-ton bridge, and there's a house, at least one house, right by that bridge that uses that, right next to it, so. I have a motion and a second to authorize the publishing of, for bid for projects for the Highway Department on replacement and grading of bridges. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
There are no planning and zoning notices, and there are no petition for compromise of lien. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is a time when the public can speak about something that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, we will move on.
Regular business. 9:00 AM is a public hearing to consider an application to transfer a retail on-sale liquor license from Dills Rocky Run Golf Course to Norby's Incorporated for Track Two Madison TRS of Outlaw A, except the east 400 feet, northwest quarter, southeast quarter, section eight, Township 104 North, range 49 West. And this application was submitted by Debbie Broberg to the auditor's office, and she is the owners of Norby's Incorporated. She will be renting the clubhouse at the golf course for her business location, so the license premises will remain the same. The planning department, sheriff's department, and state's attorney office have all reviewed the application, and there were no objections or concerns reported. And Ms. Broberg is in attendance to answer any questions you have, so our action today is to either approve or deny the transfer of the license.
This is a public hearing, so is there anyone who would like to speak against this liquor license? So anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Barth.
I'd make a motion to approve it. They're not moving the location, and there is no objection from any county office.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
And it's not 9:15 yet, so we'll move on to item 12, which is to authorize the submittal of an application for a South Dakota Broadband Initiative Technology Planning Grant. Is Monty here? Is Monty working? Yeah. Monty Wattenbach.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wattenbach, Minnehaw County Information Technology Director. So my memo to you just kind of indicated that we are looking to submit a grant that we would utilize for some wireless access points throughout the county. It would be straightforward.
We talked about this about a couple months ago already. Is there a motion to approve the submittal of the application for the broadband initiative?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Monty.
And item 13, authorize the chairman to sign a request to transfer the domain name minnehawcounty.gov. Monty Wattenbach.
Go back and look at that wording. It's not to transfer the domain name, it's more to acquire the domain name, so.
Sign your request. It was my mistake, Monty.
Just looking to get the domain name, minnehaw.gov. The recommendations for those domain names, when you get the .gov domain, is to put in a little bit more of a distinction whether you're a county or a city and something with the state. That's kind of their preference, it's not a requirement. I'm recommending we drop the county off and not put in a state designation. I'm not aware of any other Minnehaw counties or cities, so I think it would be shorter, and that would be my preference. They may or may not accept our request. I'm familiar with another local government in town that tried to shorten theirs up, like what we're trying to do, and they were rejected, but I think it's worth a try. And, are there any questions you have?
Commissioner Kelly.
Could you go on and describe what, how we make that transition to emails and stuff?
Yeah, very good question. As far as the transition, the transition would be very easy, very smooth, in that we would, we'd be able to start using that new domain name, but we probably would never get rid of, or at least not for the near term, get rid of minnehawcounty.org. We could continue to maintain that domain name potentially for forever. So when we got this new domain name at our choosing, we would be able to direct our web traffic to that, or we could start using it, again, if someone went to minnehawcounty.org, that would still work. Probably what we would do with time is just redirect that to minnehaw.gov. As far as emails, the old email domain name would continue to work probably forever. The new domain name would start working whenever we wanted it to start using it. And, you know, moving forward, we'd probably get to a point where we would just create new employees up, so they only had a minnehaw.gov email address, but for existing employees, we'd probably keep that old one. We certainly wouldn't want to disrupt business and, you know, prevent those old, original email addresses from working, so.
It would be seamless, as far as the sender, or the, whoever's going in to look up minnehawcounty.org, they wouldn't even know that it goes over, except they'd see at the top.
Yeah, so as far as the website goes, yeah, if they typed in www.minehawcounty.org, probably initially would just have that stay the same, but with time, probably what we would do is transition it, so if they went to that, it would redirect them to minnehaw.
It'll take them right over to the .gov website.
Correct.
And can that same thing be done with the emails?
It would be a little bit different in that you're not going to see the address change, but yes, the domain name, minnehawcounty.org, would never go away, so if someone out, you know, that we're doing business with has our minnehawcounty.org email address in their address book, that will continue to work indefinitely.
But you wouldn't need to have, if you preferred to go over to the .gov, so it'd be like D. Kelly, minnehaw.gov.
Yep, you'd have, you'd have both, for example.
But anything sent to .org would just roll into that same account, correct?
Correct. Yep, it would all be one account, so there'd be two email addresses really tied to every existing employee's mailbox.
Commissioner Barth.
Monty, these aren't very expensive, right?
Correct. Hundred and twenty-five dollars per year.
So the expense is minimal. Is there any danger that someone could squat on our addresses?
No, the process for the .gov domains is more stringent, that's why I'm standing here, because it does require the signature from the highest person in your organization.
As opposed to the jeffbarthformayor.com?
Yeah, someone could, someone could register that name in anticipation.
Jeff, I'll sell it back, Jeff, for 20 bucks.
20? Okay.
Any other questions for Monty?
Go ahead.
I do have a motion and a second for the chairman to sign a request to register the domain name of minnehaw.gov. I think I have a motion.
No, I don't think you do.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Monty.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move back up to item 11, which is a public hearing to consider 2013 carryovers and other 2014 supplements from the general fund to various general fund budgets in the amount of $239,713.07 and $553,683.99 from special revenue funds to various non-general fund budgets. Darlene Johnson.
Good morning again, Darlene Johnson, auditor's office. This is a public hearing, of course, and it's an annual request that we bring to you every year for those expenditures incurred in 2013, but not paid until after the end of the year is closed. And there are several documents that departments have submitted, some of them just give me emails. So again, it's, those items that were either ordered or contracted for in '13 that are not paid, we also have dedicated grant budgets that we supplement the entire amount of the grant when we receive it, and then just carry over whatever that balance is at the end of the year. There is one additional budget supplement or request included in here that isn't necessarily a carryover. Last year, we entered into a contract with a Segal company to conduct a compensation study. We're carrying over a balance of funds from human resources to cover a portion of that, and Carrie Dever is estimating that the total cost of that study will exceed what she has in the budget plus that carryover, so is requesting additional carryover, or supplement amount. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Darlene? This is a public hearing, so it'd be the opportunity to anybody that has questions or would like to speak on the matter of our carryovers. Is there anyone that wants to speak on that? Seeing no one, and no questions from the board. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second for the 2013 carryovers and other 2014 supplements from the general fund to various general fund balances in the amount of $239,713.07 and $553,683.99 from special revenue funds and various non-general fund budgets. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 14 is consider a recommendation for bid awards for various materials for the Highway Department. For the annual highway materials letting, bids open February 26, 2014. DJ Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. We have a pretty thick packet for this one. This is our annual materials letting. We had this year 16 separate proposals that were part of the bid solicitation, ranging from, anything from asphalt to purchasing jackhammer bits. A lot of the things that we go and we purchase on a pretty regular basis, and to prevent our supervisors from having to go get quotes, or to comply with state purchasing statutes, we hold this letting annually in order to just make our operations more efficient. Of the 16 total bid proposals, we had three this year that either had bid irregularities or no bid, and then the remaining 13, we are choosing to award those to the lowest qualified bidder. And so we have 13 contracts that we've provided to Cindy Jepson for signature upon your approval of the, of the bid awards. So if you have any questions about any of them specifically, I can answer them at this time.
Any questions? Commissioner Kelly.
The irregularities, what, what causes that, something to fall under that?
There were two of them. Two of the proposals had irregularities, and basically what it is, we provide a proposal form that we want filled out, and the bidders change the proposal form and write in different numbers and different things. They propose stuff that's not on the proposal form, and so we have to throw those out.
They're not public, then they've not, nobody's seen the numbers, is that correct? I mean, obviously, do you have to rebid them?
We're going to be rebidding the traffic signs, and we will not be rebidding the erosion control materials. Those were the two that had irregularities. The traffic signs will be coming forward with a request of advertised here probably next week, and then the erosion control material is a proposal. That's small enough that we can just go and we can solicit quotes, and so we won't have to go through the public process again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. DJ, could you just read the list of the 13 and who we are awarding to what products?
Yes. Proposal one is medium-curing cutback asphalt MC-70, and award contract goes to Geberal Inc. Proposal two, hot-mixed asphalt concrete pavement, bid scheduled B, goes to Concrete Materials Inc. Proposal three, furnish and install asphalt rubber sealant, crack seal, goes to Highway Improvements Inc. Proposal four, furnish and install hot-pore asphalt patch material, goes to Highway Improvements Inc. Proposal number five, ready-mixed concrete, goes to Winter Inc. Proposal six, aluminum traffic signs, no award due to bid irregularities. Proposal seven, sign posts, 3D specialties. Proposal eight, aluminum traffic signs with flashing LEDs, goes to 3D specialties. Proposal nine, snowplow and moto grade blade-cutting edges. Items one through nine, the contract goes to DM I Tareks. They did not bid on items 10 and 11, so we have no, no contract, or their contract does not include items 10 and 11 on that. Proposal number 10, abrasive and salt mixture, salt sand, we received no bids for that contract. Proposal number 11, rock salt and transportation, Mills and Miller. Proposal number 12, oxygen and welding gases, Matheson Linwell Inc. Proposal number 13, jackhammer bits, construction products. Proposal number 14, sandblasting media, Stan Houston Equipment. Proposal number 15, guardrail, BX Construction. Proposal number 16, erosion control materials, no award due to bid irregularities.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding the bids? I have somebody, somebody in the back here. If you want to come up and identify yourself, please.
I'm Darryl Hoyer. I'm with Merlen Royce Pavy. I just have a question. There were several bids that were read on those material lettings that, I know of two for sure that did not include the bid security that was required in your notice to bidders. There's been no mention of that. There was no mention of it in your bid tabulation, and there was no mention of it today. Is it your intention to award bids and consider the bid security as a irregularity, or whatever you can call it? I guess that's a question.
DJ, you want to?
I think that impacts the integrity of the bid process for all bids, regardless of who's bidding and what it is. That is part of the bid documents, and it's required in your notice to bidders. Thank you.
Thank you. DJ, you want to respond to that?
I sure can.
The state statute requires bid security for any construction project greater than $50,000. These proposals are all for the purchase of materials, and so by statute, it's my understanding that we are not required to have a bid bond. And we do require in our front-end documents, if it's greater than, I believe, $25,000, to supply bid bonds, and there were a couple of them, and I don't know which one specifically. I do know that bid proposal number two, Concrete Materials Inc., their proposal did not include a bid bond with it. We did consider that a bid irregularity that could be waived in the best interest of Minnehaw County, given that we only received one bid for that, that proposal, and so.
State's Attorney's Office, would you like to comment on that?
I can't.
I can't offer your opinion on that right now. I'd have to look into the issue as to whether that's disqualifying. At this point, I noticed that as I'm looking at the statutes, some of the statutes were amended as, as little ago as 2010, and so I just want to double-check on that to make sure that I understand that correctly as well. But I'd have to, I'd have to look at this issue. I was not aware of this, so.
Commissioner Pecus?
Yeah, I'm looking at actually bid tabulation, and I'm looking at the bid from Merlin Roy's, but I see it actually says no bid. I guess the question I have is, did Merlin Roy's actually bid on, on at least proposal number two? And I believe there's bid schedule A and bid schedule B, and I see no bid from Merlin Roy's, and I'm looking through, and I don't, I don't see any other bid information from Merlin Roy's.
They, they submitted a bid packet, and on the bid proposal form, they indicated no bid. I think that this is the second year in a row that they've done that. And I've attempted to contact Merlin Roy's and ask what's going on with that, and have received no response. Perhaps Mr. Hoyer could address that issue again.
Okay, I'll ask Mr. Hoyer. Mr. Hoyer, could you come to the stand, please?
I'm not aware of anybody contacting us. Well, I guess I have email, I have voicemail, I have all kinds of things.
Well, I guess the question I have, the only thing I see from Merlin Roy's would be on proposal number two, and it looks like hot mix asphalt, or hot mix asphalt. And I see, it says no bid, at least for the information we're given, it says no bid as to schedule A and schedule B. Did you guys not bid?
We did not submit a price on A or B.
Oh, okay, all right.
By the way, the proposal is set up, it unbalances the bid due to the 5,000-tonne shingles requirement. We don't furnish product with shingles in it. And so that, in our opinion, it unbalances the playing field, and there was no way for us to win that.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out, because the information I've got just said there was no bid.
By the way, we submitted bid security with it as required by your notice to bidders. It says it, it's required for a $500 bid security.
Got it.
Any further questions?
I'm, yes?
I don't know who to ask this of, but back when we were discussing the bids earlier, there was a product that multiple providers could give us, and then there was a product that only one provider locally. So is the shingle issue the issue that only one provider could?
Correct.
And that, what that is, is it's asphalt with shingles melted into it, right?
If I could explain further, the city of Sioux Falls has done the same thing. They will let one proposal, and it will be just allowing wrapped recycled asphalt pavement, not shingles. That proposal is safe, or in your, in the county's case, 20,000-tonne. Either firm, anybody could bid on that. Then they turn around and ask for a proposal B. In your, in the county's case, 5,000-tonne of asphalt mix, allowing wraps, shingles. The bid item, you could still take the bid item, 5,000-tonne. It doesn't affect bid item A. So in other words, either firm that supplies recycled asphalt pavement mix could be awarded the 20,000-tonne or 15, however you wanted to set it up. But only one firm would be bidding on the 5,000-tonne. The way it was structured in this bid proposal, you could bid on A of 20,000-tonne or B, which was the combination of 15,000-tonne without it and 5,000-tonne with it. So there would be no reason to bid on A. B was going to be, B was going to win. The mix is cheaper with shingles in it. The 5,000-tonne offsets any, any savings that you could.
So in other words, from your perspective, the contract was constructed in a way that only one bidder could, could go for it?
Correct.
Comments from the Commission? I'm wondering if we should pull those three that did not meet the bid security until Kirsten has a further opportunity to look at it.
I'll make the motion.
And a motion?
Second.
A second, a motion and a second to pull the three bid awards that would deal with the bid security. Do we know which ones those are, D.J.?
Let's see if I have it in this packet. Shannon, you know what the other two were?
Is there any pressure to do this this week, or can we do the whole thing next week?
If you'd like to delay the whole thing, that's fine, too.
I'll change, I withdraw my motion.
Draw the motion to, to hold for security bids evaluation?
I'll just change the motion to defer this action on this item until next week.
Have a motion to defer action until next week on the bid award on Highway Department materials. You have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments?
I'm just not a little, I'm not quite comfortable with this thing. I think better off that Kirsten has a chance to look at it. We'll have a better decision next week.
All right.
I would like to make a comment, too, if I could, Chair.
Yep.
Just for the, the Commission's information, the price difference between recycled asphalt shingle mix and the regular asphalt mix is a dollar fifty per ton. And so if you add that, if you multiply that out by the amount of tonnage that we have, it's a total of six, $7,500 on a $920,000 contract. So our argument is that they could clearly make that up based on the unit price of their bid.
All right. I have a motion and a second to defer until next weekend, or next week, excuse me, Tuesday. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, those, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously to defer until next week. Thank you, D.J.
Item 15 is consider a motion to approve the purchase of two Ford F-150 pickup trucks in the amount of $48,162 from Sioux Falls Ford from contract number 16546, competitively bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota to Lamb Motors. D.J. Boothey.
Commissioners, as part of our capital asset purchasing plan, we plan on, excuse me, replacing two pickups this year. And the two pickups that we're replacing are identified in the attached vehicle request forms. Both of them are 2003 Dodge 1500 pickups. One of them has 187,000 miles, one of them just under 150, or just under 145,000 miles. And we're purchasing off the state contract through Sioux Falls Ford. The state contract is through, I believe, Lamb Automotive and Pier. And so statute allows us for purchasing through a different vendor if they agree to purchase or to sell off of the state contract price. And in doing that, we're able to save shipping costs in a total of $250. And so the total cost of the contract will be $48,162 for, for both vehicles combined.
Any questions for D.J.? Commissioner Kelly.
D.J., is it the 15s that are going to go to the all aluminum body, or will be these?
I, I have no idea, Commissioner Kelly.
Because there's been a big thing about Ford changing to 150, and I'm just curious if the aluminum is going to, in the conditions you work under.
It's my understanding that the vehicles that we're purchasing are basically the same vehicle that we have purchased last year.
Okay.
And so I haven't heard anything about a change.
It must be the 15s that they're talking about.
I haven't heard anything about a change in aluminum body.
Thank you.
Any other questions? D.J., were these vehicles both on the replacement list for 2014?
They were actually on the replacement, this last year.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second with a comment.
I just see that they're going to have a rearview camera, and I know that that'll make them more safe for operation.
A motion and a second to approve the purchase of two Ford F-150 pickup trucks in the amount of $48,162. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 16 is consider a resolution to participate in the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Program. D.J. Boothey.
Last item, Commissioners. This is a, an annual agreement that we do every year. This is the, the larger contract that we do. If you understand, we do bridge inspections every two years, the majority of our structures. And so this year, we're going to be doing close to 200 bridge inspections. Last year, we did around 25, I believe, the ones that are on annual inspections. And so this is the larger of the two years. We're, we're changing consultants to Clark Engineering. This year, they, they provide bridge inspections for the city of Sioux Falls and a number of other counties and clients, and they, they have very good presentation and, and documents that they submit after their bridge inspections are complete that will help us in prioritizing and estimating costs for, for capital projects in the future. And we pay 20% of these fees. Their contract is actually through the state, and so this resolution essentially is telling the state which consultant that we would like to work with.
Any questions or comments for D.J. regarding the bridge inspection?
Make a motion to approve. I do have a comment question.
Second.
I have a motion and a second with a comment.
D.J., you've done a great job on getting our bridges pulled back into order. Didn't they do these inspections previously? I mean, what happened to those reports when these bridges were previously inspected? Did we just let them rust?
As I've said before, there's, there's some inspections that we found that were greater than 20 years old that had repair recommendations that were never taken care of.
So the inspections were made, but the recommendations were let to sleep?
I would say that's the biggest part of the problem.
I'll keep up the good work.
I have a motion and a second to consider, or to consider the resolution to participate in the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bid Inspection Program. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 17 is to authorize the chairman to sign a lease agreement between Minnehaha County and Metro Communications for space in the Public Safety Building. Ken Affirm.
Commissioners, as you know, we have a lease agreement with Metro Communications Agency as part of the joint cooperative agreement we have with the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County to provide for the operation of the Metro 911 service. The present lease for that, for the portion of the building, at the Public Safety Building, actually expired at the end of 2013, and that, but the Metro Council only had an opportunity to review this lease at their February 26 meeting. And at that time, they did review and approve the request for the new lease. The lease is for 4,296 square feet in the Public Safety Building. The lease amount remains at $11.40 per square foot, so there's no change in that rate. The one change is that the lease is only for a one-year period, so it will expire at the end of this year. The past lease, I believe, was for a two-year period, and this is for one, primarily because of some of the changes being, at least mulled in that with the Metro Communications Agency. So we are asking that, that you authorize the chairman to sign off on this lease for Metro Communications Agency.
Any questions for Ken? Be looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the signing of the lease between Minnehaha County and Metro Communications. Commissioner Barth?
Well, I just would comment that not only do we, of course, chip in on the costs of Metro Communications, but we're also paying any additional costs in maintenance and utilities that are happening over the next two years, and we're carrying that burden ourselves.
Thank you. Any other comments? I have a motion and a second to approve the lease. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ken.
Item 18, consider a recommendation from the Siouxland Heritage Museum Board of Directors for realty services for the sale of Minnehaha County-owned Bearland Parcel, and authorize the county auditor to publish the notice of the realtor retained for the sale. The proposals were received January 16, 2014. Bill Hoskins.
Madam Chair, I will not be participating in the discussion or voting.
Commissioner Kelly is recusing himself.
Good morning. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museums. Commissioners, the Minnehaha County Board of, I'm sorry, the Siouxland Heritage Museum's Board of Directors met and would like to recommend the hiring of Bender Commercial as the broker for representing the county in the sale of this land. Both parties who bid on it, both Nelson and, and Mr. Bender are present. If you have any questions for them.
Any questions or comments for Bill? Any questions or comments for Nelson or Bender Realty? Would either of you like to say anything?
Madam Chair, just would comment that Mrs. Metley is here. She was chairman of the facilities, part of the subcommittee, and also president on our museum board, and what Bill said is what we did.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Ms. Metley, would you like to say anything?
I just would like to say that both parties were, were great, and we just want to make sure that the Commission is aware that we are sitting on a ticking time bomb there at the OCM, the Old Courthouse Museum. There's a heavy load on it, and it is a risk to the public, and we'd sure like to move forward. Thanks.
Do you have a comment?
I just would say, at our last board meeting, Bill gave us a document showing a potential contribution to the museum, which was a Linotype machine from the Argus Leader, which object weighs in excess of three tons and is the size of a small car, I think. We don't have a place we can put it in the attic of the courthouse. It would fall right through. We need to have a place to save some of these relics, even if it's from the Argus Leader. I, I think that, that shows the need, shows the need to protect that building from our increasing collection. They are, are refusing or declining to accept contributions because they are packed to the rafters, as we've all seen. And so we need to get this thing moving forward, and we, as Diane said, we hope that no damage happens to that large artifact, the courthouse museum itself, while we wait for this project to go forward.
Any other comments? I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the museum board recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the museum board recommendation to hire a Bender Realty. Is that in the motion? Yep. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, for the time that you have put into this project and for coming to numerous commission meetings until we got this done, so thank you. And to publish notice.
Second.
Item 19 is the update and status report of the 89th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson in the Commission Office. As it has been the last couple of weeks, my presentation is going to be a bit short this morning, as most of the bills that we've been following have been resolved and dispersed with in some fashion over the last couple of weeks. Coming down to the end of the legislative session, as the end of this week is the, the end of the main run of the session, and then there will be one final, final day noted as veto day later in the month. Really, there's just a, a couple of bills that I'm going to bring to your attention. The last couple of weeks, we've talked about House Bills 1200 and 1201, both dealing with the bank franchise tax and a restructure of how that, those revenues are calculated and will result in a different calculation for, for dispersments as well. And both, both bills- And both, both bills have passed, both the House and Senate at this point, and are awaiting the governor's signature. And those are, again, those came out of a working group that's been looking at this for a number of months, and we certainly expect that those, those, both bills will be signed before I move on. Any questions on, on either of those?
I continue to be confused on the bank franchise. The report in the paper this morning said that they're 30 million short, or was, am I reading that wrong? Did you read the article, article on the Argus?
I, I must admit, I haven't had the opportunity to read that just yet.
What I don't understand is that every report you read is the, community banks are doing very well. They've improved over the year before, and then you see, you know, and you see in the governor's budget recommend, or revenue forecast, that they're looking at it down and...
I, I know that this, this deals more with the methodology of how, how those...
The bill.
What they're evaluating to come up with the calculated profits that, that their bank franchise tax would be based on. That would, that would not deal with individual yearly amounts of, of revenue. So that would, that would be the one comment that I would make.
The alleged reason is that it would smooth it out for both the states and, or for the, well, smooth it out for all of us.
I believe the article in the paper, though, today also referenced another big component of the tax that they're talking about, which is the unclaimed property.
Yeah.
And that's all part of the mix as well, and of course, we don't receive any revenues from the unclaimed property fund. Those are state revenues. As far as, you know, again, everything that we've been led to believe in, in this, is that it should, you know, you're right. We get our primary revenues from the community, but we get our revenues primarily from the community banks. And that, and a lot of the changes that were happening were from some of the, the larger credit card bank type of operations, where the most of that money goes to the state anyway. And that, so everything that we've been seeing and been appraised of as we've gone along this process is that we should see very little fluctuation in the amount of money that comes to the local units of government as a result of some of these changes.
Okay, so they have nothing to do with the community banks today that reported?
I'm not...
That was including, that was including unclaimed...
I'm not saying these changes don't have anything with the community banks. I'm just simply saying that the net effect of what we're seeing and what we've been assured of is that the impact on local government share of the bank franchise tax should be minimal.
Well, this is about as mysterious as the phone, as the tax for Metro. It's just hard to keep arms around it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Robert.
And I had one, I just had one other bill that I was, was just gonna touch on as well, and that is Senate Bill 68. That was the one that Registered Deeds Julie Risti spoke with you about at the beginning of the session, that will allow their, their office to electronically receive and record some documents in some very restricted circumstances, where they've verified both the sender and have been able to implement a number of precautions and safeguards on that. That, that has now passed both the House and Senate, and that one is passed with wide margins and appears to be awaiting the governor's signature as well. That would be a, a bill that I know she's worked on a long time and will create some efficiencies for her office. Beyond that, most of the, the bills we, we've been following, as I say, were, were wrapped up and resolved in one form or another a number of weeks ago.
I think this will be the last week that we'll have this item on the agenda.
Commissioner Barth?
Just, you know, despite our best efforts, our, we made zero progress. I mean, perhaps if we keep beating it in the next year or two, we'll make the equivalent of Senate Bill 111 do well. But our Register of Deeds Julie Risti is like scoring 100% out there, and I think rather than us go out there, we should just send her.
Reassign her.
Any other questions for Robert? All right, we'll move on. Thank you, Robert.
Item 20 is Manyah County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? None?
Well, yeah, I probably should talk about the, I don't know if I did last week, about the Metro Council.
Did we talk about last week?
I think we did talk about it last week.
We did talk about it last week. I'm sorry, yeah, then I won't, I won't regret it.
Any other liaison reports? Is there any new business? Is there any old business?
There's some old business.
Commissioner Kelly, old business?
Much to do is made about the bridge to, the bridge. Numbers were thrown out, I think USA Today had three, not three cars per month. The number that got thrown around here was three to, three to four cars a day. What, what, the, the report that DJ referred to earlier, done by DOT, the, the best, the closest report they had was the 2000 report, which showed an average daily...
Tracking?
Average daily traffic. Average daily traffic of 45 cars a day. That was 14 years ago. But the fact remains, I, I, there have been a lot of numbers put out there that weren't really, they weren't verifiable. And it's, it's not, not a highly used bridge. I don't think there's any question about that, but as to actual numbers, we, we really don't have, other than that report back from the state, which was estimated by them, too, so. And you made a comment about you wouldn't do a bridge with two to three cars a day.
Right. And, and just to further clarify one of your, one of your comments there, the, the numbers that we have from the DOT was from 2009.
Oh, I thought it was in 2000. I'm sorry. I read it wrong.
2009. And, and I explained to you out in the hallway, too, that we, we're not aware of, anyway, we don't, we don't believe we have any structures that have two to three cars per month or two to three cars per day. And if we did, we would certainly aggressively pursue closing those structures as opposed to replacing them.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Well, I also think it's important that you, Madam Chair, actually brought this issue to the commission's attention, and I think it's important that the goal was to go back and to meet with the townships to get their inclusion, because obviously, if they weren't in support of it, then maybe we should reconsider. They did meet, and they were in support of it. And Manyah County has a multitude of agreements, memorandums of understanding with our partners in government, whether they be road districts, school districts, or even townships. And this was a township road, and the township indicated that they wanted a bridge. Despite the fact that we may have reservations about it, they support it. And sometimes in government, you have to take actions that sometimes may make you scratch your head and, and wonder about it, but that also was part of our partnership. And so as in most marriages, sometimes you may not be the most aggressive supporter of a decision that's made, but ultimately, ultimately, it does take parties to come to an agreement. So that's what this commission did, and I think it's actually an example of, of good government, because we got the inclusion of the township.
Commissioner Kelly.
It's easy to want something when somebody else is gonna pay for it, but I don't apologize for bringing the issue up, and I don't know what Cindy does either, that I, I think it's important that we look at these, when we're gonna spend three quarters to a million dollars on something, we look very closely at, at what its utilization is, and I'll continue to ask the question in the future about traffic counts. I'll probably get the same answer every time, but, but at least there were, I think the commission is, wants to know the justification. That's all. We're not gonna micromanage the highway department or anything else, and obviously, the, the recommendation of the director is, is important, very important to us. But when we're facing the budget issues, which we're going to face in a few months, why, it's just nice to have as much information as we can.
Did you have a comment, DJ?
I do have a comment. One final comment. We, we do want to provide you guys with the best information that we have, and that's why we've given you the, the report numbers, the DOT report numbers on traffic. But we also wanna be able to make the best decisions, and so this past week, or two weeks ago, maybe now, we, we spent $1,300 on a new traffic counting device that's able to take traffic counts on gravel roads. We do use traffic tubes on our paved roads on a regular basis, and those get broken and torn up pretty bad when we try to use those on gravel roads. So we purchased this, this unit that's able to read cars using radar and, and count traffic on gravel roads, and we'll be providing realistic traffic counts on all of our gravel road bridges whenever we have bridge projects in the future. We, we hope to receive that here in the next week or two, I suppose.
And I think those are some of the positive things that came out of this, is that, you know, the commission asked for more information, like traffic counts and the load limits and to be in the presentation in the, in the first place, and, and more accurate maps. I think when we did approve that one initially, I think we had the directions, but nobody actually had a map as to where we're at, and so those things will be in their packets ahead of time next time. And so I think that we have gained things from this, and also we included the township and did get directed from them, too. And I think that's also important, is they need to know what's going on in their neighborhood before we make decisions about their neighborhood. Any other questions or comments on that issue?
Well, I just, you know, and I'm not disagreeing with Dick, but I do think that it's an interesting perspective, because we constantly chafe at the fact that the state second guesses the county, but here, once again, we have the county kinda second guessing the township. And I think the best discussion you can have is when there's a big table and everybody has a seat at that table.
Any other questions or comments? Any other old business? Seeing none, we will adjourn into executive session for contract discussion.
And personnel.
And personnel.
Motion, my motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive section, session for contracts and personnel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion agreed.
I think...